Help. They just want help to have a better life. And it's very touching that Tooele is allowing us to engrow this program, partially because there's such a need. Just to give you guys a little bit of statistics, we have approximately about eighty clients or eighty employees within our facility, and fifty of those employees are Tooele residents. So we want to employ Tooele residents specifically because we want to bring more business to Tooele itself. Any questions other than that?
Questions from the Commission?
Yes, I'd like to ask the applicant a couple of questions.
Please.
Thank you for your introduction. That did answer some of the questions that I had. One of the questions was, I wanted to know what your business model was. You said that you accept Medicaid. Do you also have any other forms of financial assistance for people who are not on Medicaid? Do you have any donors that support that? Or could you tell me what an applicant would take to get into your facility?
So, we don't take any private insurance.
Oh, private.
So, we don't, we don't, our program is not set up for that. And it really is Medicaid. Depending on circumstances, if it's a tribal member from a tribe here in the state of Utah, or wherever it might be, we have, we are actually, we're, we, we are governed by IHS, Indian Health Services. So that's the replacement of HHS. So that's who we, that's who we answer to. So, within our-
You said HHS, but who is HHS?
Health and Human Services.
Health and Human Services.
The state of Utah?
No. So, so our governing body is IHS. So it's a little bit different. So they have a little bit higher standards than HHS. But that is who, I guess you could say, oversees what we do specifically.
So forgive me again, IHS?
Indian Health Services.
Okay, Indian Health Services. Okay, because I called DOPL to see if you were registered, and I didn't find your licensing. You're not, you're not registered through the state of Utah, under Natsu, or?
So- So it's a little bit different for an IHS facility. So we're considered what we call an IHS facility. So every tribe has the ability to do what they call a 638 contract. A 638 contract is, pretty much allows the facility themselves to have a health facility, have a behavioral facility, and IHS who is, governs us as an organization.
Okay, so, IHS again, is that federal? Like, who oversees, who's the oversight for IHS?
It's the federal government. So it's a, it's a federal entity, yes.
Okay. And so, are they allowed to come in and inspect your, your property, inspect your records?
They are.
That there's oversight that way?
Yep, so we have audits, and they can inspect us, so yes.
Okay. You indicated that you have a large staff. I'm surprised. Do you already have fifty employees at this facility right now? But do you have residents that are there already?
So we've had residents for a while. If, so, our residents were over by, across the street from Mount West Hospital.
And I'm aware of your facility there, but was that residential at that point?
That was residential.
Oh, I didn't, didn't realize that.
Yeah, that was residential at the time. And that was why part of, the mayor has helped us push to get these facilities because of the need, and also because it just wasn't an adequate space for us.
Okay. So because you are governed by IHS, and that's under the federal government, do you have to comply with state and local codes?
Yes, we do, with some, to some extent. Meaning in the aspect of, our governing body is IHS, so it's not HHS. So we don't have to get specifically, it's recommended, but it's not something that is expected of us. But we have to comply by city code. As you remember, we, we requested to get zoned for this specific, this specific area before we acquired it. So we have to acquire, we have to comply by that. As well as anything, if we have any remodels, of course, we'd want to go through the proper channels to get that taken care of, so yes.
And you answered my question about security on-site. That was good. Are you a facility that provides detox?
So, no, not at this time. We have some plans on possibly getting some social detox, and as well as opening and expanding into a medical detox down the road.
Okay, so do you have to have a registered nurse? Are you under the care of a doctor? Who provides the medical oversight for your facility?
So we have a, we have a health clinic that's right just down the road here on, on Aaron Drive, right across from the health clinic, or excuse me, hospital. So we have a medical, a medical doctor that oversees our medication. So yes, we do have somebody that does that.
Okay. And then you answered my question about being an open campus. So the patients aren't going to be free to come and go. What's the duration of a usual normal stay? Do you consider this to be short-term treatment, long-term treatment?
So typically, treatment's about sixty days is what we, we have, we'll get our, so it varies. So depending on, there's, so we have sixty-day treatment, and depending on the treatment level where they at, can go past that, up to one hundred and twenty days. And then from there, we have what we call a Phase Two. A Phase Two, people are beginning to kind of get back into society. There is still treatment. And for our Phase Two, people are still there housed, there with us, but then they start to get back into the work mode. They start getting jobs, they're still doing treatment with us. So there is, there is some time. So it could be between, I would say, one hundred and twenty days up to maybe a little bit further beyond that, one hundred and sixty days, just depends. So each, each, each individual's different. So it's not a cut and dry.
And then do you provide after-care, after they're released out of your program, to, you know, say, another facility, to assist in helping them to get a job?
So yes. So we have, so we have in the process assisted employment. So there's a couple of things that we do. So our case managers help with a variety of different things. That is part of what our case management does. Their role is to help them identify the needs that they need, if it be a job, resume, more education. And we, they also are, they participate in our outpatient services. We also have an outpatient services, so, which they can come two or three times per week. It just kind of depends on, on each client's level of comfort and what they need.
Okay. And if I could just ask one more question?
All right.
Just with regard to, you have transitional living for men, and Mr. Harris touched on that, what type of criminal records would be allowed? Are you going to allow people to come to your facility that have been released from a correctional facility that are on probation?
That is part of, yes.
And who monitors their probation while they're at your facility?
So, the probation officer visits. So our probation, so probation officers, they know. So any treatment facility, not just ours, any treatment facility has the ability to, and I would say almost all treatment facilities have individuals that are in parole. And that relationship is built with that facility. And our case management has that relationship with those individuals. And a lot of times, judges, even here in Tooele and Salt Lake, will release individuals to certain facilities with the anticipation that that program will help them. Some of these individuals, their charges are one hundred percent drug-related. They don't have any criminal background, it's just drug-related, per se, any violence or anything like that. So the system wants to help them get back into society. So the parole officers work with the treatment facilities, and that relationship is kind of created. So to answer that question, all facilities do that, not just ours. There is that relationship with parole officers, so yes.
Okay, and so just, because that was my last question to you, being on probation just leads me to the, the comment that Mr. Harris also made regarding the daycare that is in your proximity, and the other businesses that are located around there. You know, safety of the children's utmost, you know, importance. We also have compassion for, for those citizens that need to be treated at your facility, certainly, but we also want to protect the surrounding businesses. So, so could you give me an idea of how you're going to protect the businesses and the daycare and the residents during your area?
So that's kind of a tricky question, in my opinion. Because by saying that, you're implying that our residents are of violence of some nature. So I would probably challenge you on that by saying that a good chunk of our, our clients, if not all, have gone through a challenging time. Women that have fallen into addiction, that have the fear of losing their children, men that have fallen to alcohol, that have, don't have the capacity to keep a steady job. Those are the people who we see. So, I, we don't, that is not the demographics who we're focusing on. We're not focusing on sex abusers, we're not focusing on sex offenders, we're not focusing on criminals that have, that have murdered. Those are not our clients. And you, if, as you begin to see other recovery facilities, interestingly enough, the biggest fear is with bringing this type of facility, that there'll be more crime. It's actually the opposite. As mentioned before, they're your neighbors. They're the people who come to church with you, that are opiate users. And a lot of times, you guys don't see them. These people go to church on a regular basis, either LDS or Catholicism, but they hide it for years until finally they break and say, "I need help." Those are the people who come to our facility.
Certainly, and I, I wasn't categorizing their character. I just wondered if you had a written policy or procedure, you know, that your governing board would abide by, that would guarantee, or at least give comfort to those who are here? Mr. Harris represented several businesses that are in his area. You know, what, what guarantee does he have that your, your business has a policy that would be a protection to, to your neighbors?
I can't guarantee anything. Just like the business below me couldn't guarantee that a car could run into my facility. Or just like a drunk driver could come into my facility. I don't have guarantees. Now, we have policies, absolutely. But that policy won't guarantee that somebody might do something. No, I don't, I don't think there is any policy. It'd be the same thing if I asked a liquor store, what's the guarantee that somebody won't come over here drunk and break into my business? It's the same thing. Or even, even somebody who sells marijuana, you know, what's your guarantee to do that?
Well, I, I wasn't asking for a guarantee. I was asking for a policy or procedure. Do you have one in place?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Further questions?
So, I'm going to touch on that a little bit. But does your facility, because it is a big facility, do you have like a security system in place that's monitored, both internal and external, that would protect both your residents and your staff, as well as anyone potentially external? Because we, we can't always predict what will or won't happen, and we definitely want both internal and external to be safe. Is that something you have, or like a security team in place?
Thank you, thank you for asking that question. So yes, one of the biggest things for us is to have eyes on all of our facility. We cannot operate without knowing where our blind spots are, as well as all of our areas. So yes, we have, the current system that was in place by the previous owners was very good. And we're actually adding more to that, just so we don't have any blind spots. And in addition to that, as mentioned, we will have security twenty-four-seven walking around, making sure that there's nothing there, nothing happening. Interestingly enough, we worry more about the outside than the inside. Because we don't know, some of these women that come here come from abusive situations, and we don't want their spouses, their partners coming here. So as much as we're protecting them, they're also, you know, we want to protect others as well.
Thank you.
I just have one logistic question. So will you be moving all of your operations from that, what you're doing now down on Aaron Drive, to this location? Or will there still be duality there?
No. So the only thing that we'll actually be operating over Aaron Drive is our outpatient services.
Okay.
Yep, so that's pretty much it. And we'll have our health clinic there, and there on our administrative offices.
All right.
Seeing no further questions, thank you, Mr. Harris.
Wait, I have one.
Sorry. You're supposed to do like-
I know. I just need a clarification on the fencing. You mentioned like a piece of fence, and then a gate on one side. Is that a perimeter, a fence? Do you have continuing fence all the way around the perimeter?
For the most part, yes.
What is, I don't know what that means.
So yes, so the question was, are we going to have fencing throughout the entire?
Right.
Yes, we are. We will have fencing.
But you said for the most part. What did you mean by that?
Meaning that we will have, on the front, we won't have, they'll have an iron gate. So you will be able to see this. There'll be fencing there.
Yeah.
Yes, so, and on the back, we'll also have a gate. And then over on the southeast corner right there, we'll also have enclosing that as well. So just, the iron gates is where it won't be completely-
Right.
Closed off.
But it's closed in. Okay.
Yes.
One more? Thank you. Parking, there are one hundred and eight stalls there currently. You said you'll have between fifty and eighty employees, not there all at once, of course.
No, not at all.
But how, how often, or is it, do the residents of your facility often bring a car? Or?
No.
It's unusual?
It's very unusual.
What do you think about parking? What would the situation be like?
So our parking for our employees will be adequate enough. For, for those individuals that are going into what we call our Phase Two, that will be kind of transitioning to work. A lot of them don't buy cars, just because they don't have money to start out with. So it'll be taking the transit system. We have a shuttle that will actually be providing transportation for some of our, some of our clients that are working in town. Some may, depending on, on if they have the ability, but no, most likely not.
What would you do if there wasn't adequate parking? Like, where would overflow parking go?
So we have, right now, a significant amount of overflow parking. I, I don't think we'll get to that point, to be honest with you. Just for the amount of people that we have, as well as what we have programmed for transportation, I don't think we'll get to that point.
Okay. And how many, sorry, one more. How many residents will you have at a time of male residents and female?
So we have approximately, will be sixty male and sixty female, give or take.
Thank you.
Please, any more questions? Feel free.
No, I don't know. Okay, seeing no further questions from the Commission. Anyone else, we had some late arrivals, so I'll go ahead and keep the public hearing open if something else, someone else has a question or comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll call this public hearing close, bring it back to the Commission for further action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we table the conditional use request pending additional information. I have questions on the licensing on Indian Health Services. Like I said, I called the state of Utah for information they had, and I called, I reached out to DOPL, I looked online, there was no licensing. And I just want to make sure that they do comply with state and local requirements, as well as Indian Health Services, which is oversight of federal government. That's my opinion. So I would like to move to table the conditional use request pending additional information.
I hear your motion. I'm going to turn my head over towards Roger and say, Roger, my, my impression is that, in this particular case, and Mr. Garcia touched on it, they are overseen by federal agencies, which generally speaking supersede state and local, with the exception of something like this, as a conditional use permit. Can you speak to that and educate us a little bit?
I'll try. It's a complex area of law when you combine federal law, tribal law, state law, and local law. And, but it's my understanding that their operations and facilities are governed by Indian Affairs. But they still have to comply with local zoning and land use and building and fire codes, which is why they're here tonight, because we require them to have a conditional use permit. So that's, that's the short answer, in a nutshell, that, that yes, they have to comply with all the rules that, that affect this kind of facility. Now, as to the motion, the code allows you to take what time you need to get, to have the information, that you need to make a vote. As you point out, you've received a lot of information tonight, and that may be sufficient for some of you. It may not be for others. So you have a motion that is proper, and it would be good to proceed with that motion, and see how it comes out.
Thank you, Roger. And I apologize, Commissioner, I should have jumped in and waited for a second before we had discussion, but I wanted to clear my mind a little bit there. So we do have a motion on the table to table until we have some of these questions, and we'll have to, I'll probably drill down a little bit on exactly what questions you wish to have, but looking for a second at this point.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, without, if there's any further discussion. Commissioner Goaches, would you restate your motion and specify exactly what information it is that you're looking to, to get, so that we can put that on the record?
I move to table the conditional use request pending additional information regarding Indian Health Services governance, and how it relates to state and local codes. This could have an impact to adjacent properties and persons or properties if they, well, I'm not for sure how to, how to state it in my, my wording, but that's my thought, is that I'd like to be able to make a recommendation that wasn't, that wouldn't have a detrimental effect to the adjacent properties and businesses. And so I wanted to get more information on licensing and Indian Health Services.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Commissioner Hammer, did you have a comment?
Chairman, I, please. Who, who necess, who do you want to provide the information? The applicant, or?
I did call Roger. Roger, I don't know if, if you can provide additional information and clarity on state and local code, or if it's just up to us to find additional research.
Well, I can't answer what the federal tribal regulations are for this facility. They are what they are, and you can't affect what they are. You can't add to or take away from what they are. I tried to explain what I think the applicability of local codes are. They apply. They'll have to have fire inspectors, they'll have to have building inspectors, building permits, all of that. So I don't, I don't have a question about what local laws apply. I'm just not familiar with tribal regulations and licensing. And I don't know how to get familiar with that. But this gentleman certainly understands that. If there, if he had some information for you on that specifically.
My concerns are from a procedural nature, because I tend to believe that what you're saying is true. We, we have the ability to oversee local land use and zoning issues. In the event that, I don't know that we have any additional ability to either find an effect that can't be mitigated, which is what we're required to do. If we, we're required to approve these, unless there's something going on that we can't mitigate, and we can't come to an agreement on. I'm not sure we have the ability to mitigate anything if it's something that, that tribal government or IHS or Health and Human Services has, Bureau of Indian Affairs has. If they come back with, you know, this is what we do, and this is the way we do it, we don't have the ability to, to make a ruling on that. So that, that would be my only concern. Not seeing any other questions, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on the motion to table. Commissioner Hammer?
Nay.
Commissioner Proctor?
Nay.
Commissioner Dunn?
Nay.
Commissioner Robinson?
Nay.
Commissioner Jensen?
Nay.
Commissioner Goaches?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan also votes nay. Rule that motion fails. Back to the Commission for additional action, or further motion.
I move, I'll make a motion to approve the permit.
Any additional?
This, what's in, I move we approve the conditional use permit required by Victor Garcia, representing Natsu Healthcare, to authorize the use of residential treatment facilities and programs for two parcels located at 461 and 491 South Main Street, application numbers P-23-322 and P-23-323, based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report dated April 18th, 2023.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, can I, can I ask Commissioner Proctor if he's amenable to an additional part of his motion, that we add the condition of fencing surrounding the area, like has been discussed, including the gates in the area? So to provide for the public welfare and the welfare of those that are inside that facility?
Yes, I am.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second from Commissioner Dunn. Roll call vote, Commissioner Hammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goaches?
Nay.
Commissioner Sloan also votes aye. Rule that passes. Let's see, here we are.
Six to one.
Thank you, six to one, I appreciate that. I'm new here. Item number four, public hearing and decision on conditional use permit request by Kim Gibson to authorize a home-based daycare business involving the care of eight to sixteen children at eight-twenty-two Cedar View Circle in the R-18 residential zone on .3 acres. Mr. Agar?
Thank you, Commissioners. Hopefully this one's a little easier. This is a home-based daycare proposed for eight-twenty-two Cedar View Circle, which is the property highlighted in red on the aerial photograph. She's proposing a home-based daycare facility involving the care of eight to sixteen children. I believe she is proposing eleven children in the home. The property is owned R-18, as are all of the surrounding properties. So everything in the area is single-family residential. And the applicant did provide a, a parking and traffic plan that was included in your packet. They're proposing that the frontage and their driveway be utilized for child drop-off and pickup. As I've mentioned before in previous applications such as this, home-based daycares are slightly different from preschools in that they're not session-oriented. And so the drop-off and pickup times are usually staggered. So staff does not anticipate any significant impacts to the adjacent properties related to this home-based daycare. This is a public hearing. We did send out notices to the property owners, then two-hundred feet, and I have not received any written or verbal comments concerning this application. So we're recommending approval with the basic conditions listed in your report. If you have any questions, they can try and answer them for you.
Thank you, Andrew. Commissions for staff from the Commission, let's try this again. Questions from the Commission for staff. Seeing none, thank you, Andrew. We'll again open this public hearing, again, same as last time. If you wish to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name, where you're from, and when you're done, circle back and, and record that with our minute taker, if you would. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the Commission for further action.
I move we approve the conditional use permit request by Kim and Josh Gibson to authorize Kim's kids a home-based daycare business involving the care of eight to sixteen children, application number P-23-368, based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report dated April 18th, 2023.
Thank you, Commissioner Dunn. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Jensen. Commissioner Hammer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goaches?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan also votes aye. Rule that passes seven to zero. Item number five, public hearing recommendation on a zoning map amendment request by Holly Jones to reassign the zoning for .39 acres located at 60 South Main Street from G C General Commercial Zoning District to the M U G Mixed Use General Zoning District. Mr. Agar?
Thank you, Commissioners. You're probably familiar with this property, as she did a land use map amendment in early March. And during that application, the property was changed from community commercial to mixed use. This zoning map amendment application is the follow-up to that land use map amendment application. And it impacts the existing property highlighted in red. It's the old Gordon Furniture Building, two-story structure. Property is currently zoned G C General Commercial. As I mentioned, the, the land use map was recently changed to mixed use. And so the applicant is proposing to change the zoning to mixed use general, which is in compliance with the land use map of the Tooele City General Plan. She is requesting this change to authorize a residential treatment facility a smaller scale than what was just discussed by the planning commission. And there'll be also some commercial activities that are, will be located in the ground floor of the structure. Those are permitted in the zone, and are not a question with this application. See, I think that's about all I have to report on the, on the application. And if you have any questions, happy to answer them for you.
Questions from the Commission?
And I believe the applicant is here, if you have any questions for her as well.
Okay, seeing no questions, hang on just a second, Ms. Jones. I'll give you your shot. We will open the public hearing. Again, if anyone has anything to say on this, please come forward, state your name. Again, if anyone has anything to say on this, please come forward, state your name, make your statement, and then circle back and make sure that we have your name and contact information. Not seeing anybody, have at it, Ms. Jones.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I'll ask a real basic one. You've sat through the last hearing.
Sure.
There were quite a few questions, obviously. Did you, anything jump out of those questions and those statements that you feel is something we should know regarding your facility, besides, obviously, scale?
Sure, yeah. My facility is completely different. They only serve the Medicaid population and tribal population. I serve private insurance. Also, we haven't decided in full if we're going to do a full RTC, which is Residential Treatment Facility, or if we're going to do more of an outpatient with housing above. The reason that I am doing the mixed use is because I'm also down, part of the Downtown Alliance Group, and we really want to bring back the dual purpose to the downtown corridor. It always has historically been that way, so we would like to bring that back down to the downtown area. So, to be able to have, my building has eight residential apartments above, and it has commercial on the main. So, we want to be able to have that dual use back in those areas.
Thank you. Further questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thanks, Ms. Jones, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Not seeing anyone else coming forward to speak, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for further action.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move we forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the Beacon House zoning map amendment request by Holly Jones reassigning the zoning for .39 acres from the GC General Commercial Zone to the MUG Mixed Use General Zone, application number P-23-333, based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report dated April 17, 2023.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call vote, Commissioner Hammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goaches?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan also votes aye. Rule that passes seven to zero. Item number six on the agenda, public hearing recommendation on a land use map amendment request by Godilio Palomino and Juana Cruz to reassign the land use designation for .28 acres located at 248 North Gardner Street from medium-density residential to community commercial. Mr. Agar?
Thank you, Commissioners. So, this is a land use map amendment, and this is the application that precedes the zoning map amendment. This is where we look at a property and decide what kind of land use we want to occur there. And as you can see on the zoning map, the property is located on the east side of Gardner Street, immediately on the other side of Vasa Health and Fitness, and is a property that is currently zoned R17, which is a single-family residential zone. The property currently bears the medium-density residential land use designation, which is a land use designation that is exclusively for single-family residential, and includes the R17, R18, and R110 residential zoning districts. It does not permit commercial other than a home occupation, and the applicant wishes to eventually construct a laundromat and beauty salon on the property. And this is how the map would appear if the community commercial designation is approved for the subject property. As you can see, on the east side, it is all residential. On the west side, it is all commercial. So, at some point in time, this was established as the boundary or the extent of commercial for this area. However, there is nothing that says that the commercial can't move beyond Gardner Street if the city council and planning commission determine that this is appropriate use for the property. In regards to uses around the property, the properties to the north and to the south are vacant, and this property is vacant, and from what I see, when I go to Vasa Fitness, is not much going on there. So, that's what's being proposed. They want to be able to change the property ultimately to general commercial. We need to get the land use map amendment taken care of first, and that is my presentation on this application. If you have any questions, I'll try and answer them for you.
Thank you, Andrew. Questions for staff from the commission? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open that. As you've heard ad nauseam at this point, please come forward and say what you will, and let us know who you are, where you live, and make sure you circle back to the minute taker, please.
Hi, my name is Ken Fraley. My wife Audrey. We are landowners to lots to the north at 263 North First East. We are immediately behind the building of Vasa. I'm here because I would like to ask you to not approve this. My family is owned, my house was built in 1906. My family has been in ownership all through that time. My grandfather built the home, my father owned it, and now my wife and I have lived there for the past 50 years. Our property goes all the way to the east side of Gardner Street. A few years ago, the city actually proposed to change the designation along the east side of Gardner Street from Utah Avenue all the way to 400 North. As property owners at that time, our argument was that, as has been stated, that the residential use was, or commercial use was to be right down Gardner Street. And our rationale at the time was that the city had said that, well, this would create a buffer zone. I think that's nonsense. We labeled it as encroachment, and you're moving further to this, this is a residential area. The way I would label this proposal is not encroachment, but erosion. And you're going to change things until this is the nose of the camel in the tent. My property is just private. I do move my trailers in and out of the gate on my property, and parking becomes a problem, and I can't get my trailers in and out when people park on that Gardner Street. I'm concerned about that, but I'm mostly concerned that this change impacts this entire residential area, and that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Fraley.
Mr. Fraley, just could I ask you exactly what property is yours?
If you go, it's, you can see just the edge of my property, just to the north, you can see the edge of my property, my, I have a personal shop there, and then our home stretches from 100 East all the way to Gardner Street.
So, three up from the red?
Yes.
Very, very top?
Yes, you can see that little gray area above the R1. That's my property.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else wish to come forward and speak on this? Seeing none, is the applicant here who wishes to address us?
Sorry, where are you here? I've been trying to trust my...
Would you like to come forward and speak to us, or?
Yes. He's having some... He has a fear of expanding his home, which is a residential property he's lived in for many years. So, the city decided that that's the limit, and he has a fear of more and more.
I've been looking at Tuila, and I see that the city is advancing towards the outskirts of the outside, very beautiful with the houses, modern, but Tuila, and especially that street of North Gardner Street, all that street is silent, there's nothing, nobody has a house, even though there are terrains that are abandoned.
Yeah, so, you know...
I'm sorry, could you state your name for us, please?
My name is Godilio Palomino.
My name is Glenda Palomino.
Thank you, please go ahead.
So, he's saying he's noticed that Tuila is expanding, expanding, and houses are being built on the edges of Tuila, but he's noticed that that specific area, it's been abandoned. There's, no one's building houses there, no one's building other things there, you know?
And I bought the land for a house, but I see that there's a lot of traffic going on there, and it wouldn't, it might not be the best place, like, people might not want to live there, you know, because of all the traffic going on around there. So, you know, the lot has been abandoned, he wants to do something with it, so that's where the thing is, like, maybe we should change it to something commercial and have something in place there, since there's already a lot of business going on there, too.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant from the commission?
I have a question, but it probably isn't for the applicant. Mr. Fraley isn't amenable to changing. Are other landowners amenable to change? Because this is kind of like a spot zone request, so I, did any other applicants or landowners respond?
So, I did send out notices to property owners within 200 feet, and nobody commented on it, had not received any written or verbal comments on it.
So, my question was more for staff, not for you particularly.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
You know, he is understanding of what he's saying, you know, but, you know, we see that things are changing in the city, you know, things are growing, so that's all he wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Palomino. Okay, seeing no one else, I'm sorry, Mr. Baker?
Just to address the Commissioner Goaches's comment about spot zoning. That used to be more of a concern than it is today under the law. The Utah Supreme Court has ruled that spot zoning isn't really a thing anymore. It's, the only question to be asked by the commission and the council is, is this in the city's interest to zone, to rezone this land, or change the land use designation for this land? Whether it's one parcel or 100, the question is the same, is it in the city's interest? So, it's no longer a legal problem to rezone one individual property at the property owner's request, if the council finds that it's good for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Fraley, get ready to close this, but if you've got one more thing that you make, I'll have some leeway here.
I'm certain that these people have good intentions, but it strikes me as strange that you wouldn't want to build a house here, but you're expecting the rest of us to live with you building a business here. And I just don't find that as a reasonable thing to do. I don't know this gentleman's name that introduced this, but he even said, "This is residential." It's always been residential. It's not abandoned land. It's not.
Thank you, Mr. Fraley. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for further comment, question, or actions?
I have one, just one question, testing the institutional memory of somebody. Mr. Fraley mentioned that there was something about this happening sometime before. When was that? Was that my lifetime, or like pioneer times?
A long time ago.
Anybody know? So, recent, recently? Okay.
Like you said in that chair when it happened.
All right, I just was trying to get a gauge. Recognizing that Mr. Agar mentioned the historical nature of where that line was drawn, if it was tested five to seven years ago, that just was a question that was in my mind. Thank you.
I have no recollection of attempting to rezone this whole area. The only recollection I have is I recall Mr. Fraley commenting on the proposed changes to the Sterling Elementary, that project, but that's long under the bridge.
Was it part of a discussion of the general plan? It wasn't in the general plan, but I think it might have been part of the discussion in the general plan.
That's my recollection as well.
I don't remember that, that's why I asked.
Okay. And I'm not 100% sure if that's where I've remembered it from as well.
Okay.
Further comments, questions, or a motion? Okay, the chair moves that we forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the Palomino Cruz land use map amendment request by Godilio Palomino and Vilche Cruz to reassign the land use for .28 acres from a medium-density residential to community commercial, application number P-23-337, based on the findings, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report dated April 17, 2023. I'll second. We have a motion, we have a second. Commissioner Hammer, how do you vote?
Nay.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goaches?
Nay.
Commissioner Sloan also votes aye. Rule that passes four, three, five, two.
Five, two. Positive recommendation, not possible.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Item number seven, public hearing recommendation on a land use amendment request by Tuilii City RDA to reassign the land use designation for approximately 25 acres located approximately 450 South Tuila Boulevard from regional commercial to light industrial. Mr. Agar?
Thank you, Commissioners. So, this land use map amendment involves the 25-acre parcel highlighted in red on the aerial photograph. You'll notice that it is immediately adjacent to Tuila Boulevard, north of 700 South and east of the Union Pacific Railroad. The property currently bears the, I've got the wrong map on there, apologize, but the property currently bears the RC, Regional Commercial, land use designation, which is a land use designation that requires the regional commercial and research and development zoning districts. The property is owned by the Tuilii City RDA, and the party that is interested in purchasing the property needs the Light Industrial Zoning District in order to facilitate their operations. So, they are proposing to change the land use map to Light Industrial. Light Industrial land use designation includes the Light Industrial Zone, as well as the Industrial Service Zone. Both of those zones are oriented towards industrial uses that do not generate any noticeable impacts in regards to odor, glare, noise, vibrations, other types of impacts that we would expect with heavy industrial. The property, just, as you can see, we have Light Industrial to the north. It's not, this proposed land use designation isn't out of character for the area. The RD zoning is more of a remnant zone from a time when we had expected a large Utah State University campus in this area. Utah State University has not indicated any plans recently to expand. They did receive a notice for this application, and I did receive a comment from Utah State University. I did forward that comment to the planning commissioners. They had expressed, I'll just go over those really quick. They had expressed some concerns from the noise from the future development of this parcel, which may disrupt classes, and they hope that Tuilii City be mindful of this concern, and then they're concerned by the safety of their students on Tuila Boulevard and whether this will increase traffic. And then Utah State is constantly improving its landscape along Tuila Boulevard, is developing a water-wise landscape along the roadway, and USU would request the landscaping along the frontage of the parcel be considered to be similar. We have... We have no problem with that. In fact, we're working on our ordinances to eliminate sod and so forth from industrial landscaping. So those are some of the concerns expressed by Utah State. They didn't seem to have any concerns with this turning into industrial. They just want to make sure they maintain the safety of their students and so forth. So if that's what's being requested, if you'd like some more information on what's going to be on the property, I'm sure Mr. Stewart can address you further on that, but we need to get the land use map done before we can do the zoning change. So any questions for me?
Questions from the commission?
I have one. What's the little tiny regional commercial piece right there?
That is a city well.
Okay.
Yep.
That's it. Additional questions? Mr. Stewart, would you like to, as the applicant, would you like to come forward? Maybe I should do this backwards. We'll open the public hearing. Anybody from the public that wishes to come up and address that, please feel free to do so?
I'd like to hear first what you ask us.
That's not fair. Mr. Stewart, come on up.
You probably will answer the questions.
Let's find out.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Commissioners, and thanks, Charlene, for being here to represent USU as well. It's nice that we can -- that we have USU in the community, and we certainly want to make sure that they do have the ability to expand their campus, right? So there's, you know, hopefully they do, and hopefully that's a successful endeavor as well. And, you know, this is light industrial, and I think the concerns of noise and, you know, we certainly want to be mindful of that, and we wouldn't want an industrial use. We want to make sure that it would be light industrial. So Leitner Poma, the business who we are hoping to sell to, they manufacture cables and equipment that is used often at ski resorts. So they would bring in, you know, metal and basically make cables that you could then string up for ski lifts, right? And snow cats and snow machines and that sort of thing. So that's their business, right? They wouldn't operate outdoors, right? It'd be contained within their manufacturing facility, so noise would be internal, right? It wouldn't affect the campus at all, or a future campus. Leitner Poma would intend to have outdoor storage, which would require, under this zoning, a conditional use permit, right? So, and they know that and expect that. And as you know, right, last meeting, we discussed a larger rezone, which would be for 324 acres. This would be part of that rezone, but in the interest of the property sale, they're interested in making sure they have a zoning that will work, even if that other larger rezone takes a long time, right? If that takes longer to get right. So this works for their business. It gives them a zoning designation that, I suppose, enables the sale to happen and their business to operate. And it also still does enforce, you know, that they can't do industrial activities. It has to be light industrial, which should limit the noise and impact on adjacent properties. I'm trying to -- I'm looking back at USU's comments to make sure I address everything. You know, as Andrew alluded, the city's looking at adjusting landscape ordinances already. That's in the larger rezone. That's an element of that that we want to address as well, is landscaping requirements. We want to make sure that this area of our city is unique, I suppose, in that we have an opportunity to do a rezone, right? We want to make sure that we take advantage of that opportunity to make it aesthetically appealing. We want to make it a benefit to the city and a place where businesses will add value to the community and not detract, of course, from future plans or campuses. So I think that's, hopefully, that answers USU's questions, and I'm happy to answer other questions while I'm up here or after. If Charlene has other questions or things, too, I'm happy to speak to it.
Questions from the commission? Okay, thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you.
Hang around, just in case.
I will be here.
I'm Charlene Mueller, and I'm with Utah State University. I wonder, will there be large trucks? And the one thing that was not addressed here is, will air brakes be restricted from use there along Tuilla Boulevard, so that that doesn't interrupt classes?
I'm going to ask staff to answer that, because I don't know the answer as far as noise things and Jake brakes. Is that...
My initial thought on that would be the prohibition of engine brakes and things would probably need to come from the city council. They might be able to do that as a condition of the zoning map amendment. I don't know if that's accurate, but I don't think that's in the purview of the planning commission. Roger, does that sound...
Well, because it's a legislative discussion, they can recommend whatever they think they would like to see the council do in regards to any aspect of the development. Certainly, you could not enact a new noise prohibition, but you could recommend it. And that could be a condition to the zoning.
Is there already city code, no Jake brakes in the city?
I knew you were going to ask that.
But I didn't know till about 30 seconds ago, and I don't have the answer right now. I'm not aware of anything in the zoning code that would prohibit that, other than the standard noise ordinance.
It's a noise ordinance, isn't it? Yeah, it wouldn't be in the zoning code.
Yeah, it's in Title X, but I'd have to look it up.
Thinking about the inferior cities that have one, we should.
I think that was a concern, because our testing center sits right adjacent, you know, along the parking lot on that side. And so that's the concern, I think, there. And that's all I have.
Okay, we will close the public hearing at this point, bring it back to the commission for additional discussion, questions, a motion?
Chairman Sloan, I've got a question or comment, and this may be more for the zoning request, but I did speak with Mr. Stewart regarding the applicant's desire to put windmills or wind turbines on the property, and that is a possibility. So is that a discussion that should be discussed in the land use or wait for zoning?
Well, it would be appropriate if that were proposed as part of the zoning tonight, and it's not. That will be a future discussion of a new zoning district for this larger area, and at that time, certainly, it would be appropriate to discuss that.
So right now, with the smaller zoning, it's not a request by the applicant and not appropriate?
A wind turbine is not allowed in the current, under any of our zones today. So, no, we're not discussing the policy of whether we want to allow wind turbines, just whether you want to allow this property to be rezoned to light industrial.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from the commission? Or a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move forward a positive recommendation to the City Council for the Leitner Poma Development Land Use Map Amendment, request by Tuilla City RDA, based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report dated 18 April 2023.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call vote. Commissioner Hammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan also votes aye. Rule that passes 7 to 0.
Chairman, can I mention the noise ordinance very briefly, since it was asked?
If you do it really quietly, because we're kind of sensitive.
Good point. I'll whisper. It does say that prohibited in Tuilla City is operating any motor vehicle with a dynamic braking device engaged, except for the aversion of imminent danger. So I believe that's what you're addressing.
I think so. That should take care of your concern, which it not. Okay. Thank you, Roger. I appreciate that. I don't think I'm ready for you.
Yeah, we got one more.
We got one more. Yeah.
The zoning on this one we just did.
Same thing, different verse. You can get your stool out and get ready to.
I'll get my stool out.
Yeah, would you? Item number eight, public hearing recommendation on a zoning map amendment request by the Tuilla City RDA to reassign the zoning for approximately 25 acres located at approximately 450 South Tuilla Boulevard from the RD Research and Development Zoning District to LI, Light Industrial Zoning District. Mr. Agard.
This is just the follow-up application to the land use map amendment that you just heard, changing the property from RD Research and Development to LI, Light Industrial. I think we already discussed quite a bit about the differences between the two, if you have any questions. I'll have to answer them for you.
Questions from the commission? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Agard. We'll open the public hearing, and we'll quickly close the public hearing, assuming... Ms. Mueller, did you have anything to talk about on this particular one?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for remembering to go do that, too. Thank you. Okay, closing the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for further action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I move that we forward a positive recommendation to the City Council for the Leitner Poma Development Zoning Map Amendment, request by Jared Stewart, representing the Tuilla City RDA, to reassign the zoning for a 25-acre parcel from the RD Research and Development Zone to the LI Light Industrial Zone, application number P23-341, based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report dated April 18, 2023.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second from Commissioner Dunn. Commissioner Hammer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goaches?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan also votes aye. Rule that passes 7-0 for a positive recommendation for the city council. Item number nine, city council report.
Say do it fast.
Welcome.
Yeah, thanks. We didn't have a meeting last week, so I don't have anything to report from our meeting, and I was going to talk about that large attractive property, but Jared stole my thunder, so I don't really have anything unless you have questions. I just wanted to walk down here for fun.
Should we grill the city council? Any questions?
Ed can answer everything.
Thank you, council. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Item number 10, review and approval of finding commission minutes for the meeting held April 12, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, those in favor passing those, approving those minutes. Commissioner Hammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goaches?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan also votes aye. Rule that passes 7-0. One final motion.
Move adjourned.
Let's debate it for a while. Nevermind, rule were adjourned. Thank you very much for your time.